Call a meeting to order. Excuse me. And the first item is approval of minutes from our December 20th meeting, which I believe were emailed to us practically the same night as I recall. So it'll entertain a motion to waive the reading and approve unless anyone has any additions or subtractions or corrections.
Fascinating.
You move?
I moved to waive the readings.
You second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded that we waive the reading and approve. Unanimous. Oh, yeah, go ahead. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. I did too. Bad thing to do. Don't make assumptions. All right, the first petitioner is case number 20-2022-34 at 260 through 270 Second Street. The petitioner is DMS Trinity LLC. And I see they're represented.
Good evening. My name is Sheila Grant of 92 High Streets, Suite 5 in Medford.
Can anybody speak into the microphones, please?
My name's Sheila Grant of 92 High Streets in Medford. I'm here representing DMS Trinity in their request for special permit and major site plan review to renovate existing first floor space at 260, 270 Second Street in order to operate a Marirana retail facility. To recap this, because we had been through here before on the zoning recommendation, the space is zoned industrial, which allows for this type of use. It's currently, the building is currently utilized as office space and is utilized as a flower wholesaler. We would be using the space on the first floor, which has its own separate entrance. The space also provides for all requisite parking. The petitioners are social equity applicants and have received their SDO approval as a minority business enterprise. DMS is comprised of family members. Mary and Dennis are in-laws and run as a minority and women-owned business. They're committed to outreach and hiring within the city as well. I have with me the principals and also Dick Mead from Medford Engineering if we have any questions. I know that we had gone through the presentation last time we were here, but we're happy to do that again or specifically answer any questions that you might have.
I'll remind the board that the Zoning Board of Appeals approved the special permit for this last month, or earlier this month.
Questions?
Do you need our names and addresses for the record, too, at this point? Okay.
Does anyone have a copy of the site plan?
You can also go to, I think it's the slide.
Slide 22.
Yeah, slide 22 is the actual.
We'll show you the site plan.
I'm sorry, which one do you want?
She's requesting the site plan. It's on slide 22.
Yeah, because I don't have any materials, printed materials. I'm not sure if I'm supposed to, but.
I could give you mine, too, if you'd like it.
If this is a site plan review, then can we review the site plan?
Yep.
Cool.
We have, we have some right here.
We had already been through on a zoning recommendation, so the materials and all of the plans were submitted in accordance with that as well. Do you want us to walk you through? Would that be helpful? Dick, do you want to come and just walk through? So we've got it up there. We just want to walk them through.
Sure.
All right, so this is the main building and the property around it with all the parking. Our parking would be along this side here. The area on the first floor that is proposed for the business is this area right in here, which is a 41 by 95 and a half area. There's going to be a main entrance in the front, and then there's an entrance that's going to be, a new entrance coming off to the side in an area of a security area for loading, unloading, and a dumpster area. We have a couple of handicap parking spots that we're going to put in these two spots here, just northwest, or southwest, rather, of the exit. And we're also planning on putting a bike rack in between the two handicap spots in front of where the electric.
Charging station?
No, not charging stations.
Leathers?
Transformers. Two, we have two electric transformers here. So we have enough space between the two handicap spots and the depth to put a bike rack right in there. And that's basically the site. And this is a blow-up of that area in here, so it's easier to see. This is the secured fenced area. This is the newer entrance out into it. The two handicap spots and the bike rack would be in this area here.
How many parking spots were required and are you able to provide?
We have 14 spots.
Yeah, 14?
And I believe that's, that was.
So you meet the requirement on parking?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Were there any substantial changes to the site plan since we chatted on 12/20?
No.
Okay.
Any others? Questions?
Maybe just a procedural question. John, can you just provide some clarity? We're only looking at site plan, a special permit.
Right, the special permit has already been addressed. You're just looking at the site layout. Is it, does it provide for safe maneuvering? Does it provide for adequate parking? Is enough landscaping, lighting, et cetera?
Okay, and I know you went through this before, but can you just point out the site lighting? Is there any changes from the existing conditions?
Yeah, we haven't made any changes to the, to either the entrance in the front or the landing coming out into the secured fenced area. Was that your question?
Yeah, so I would imagine that meets the building code requirements and it complies with dark sky regulations.
Everything will be compliant. We kind of previewed that at our last meeting. So we've been in touch, the building itself is up to code. We have been in touch with fires, the police, so on and so forth.
Okay.
Sorry, unless I misunderstood.
And then one last question. There's the flow of traffic. So is it both entrances are two directional? Is that right?
Correct, yep. But primarily, our customers would be probably coming in this, this, this side right here.
Yes.
But you can go all the way around and there's addition. Yep.
So I guess a quick question. The parking on the left-hand side, I guess, does that belong to the whole building? And is that free to park?
So these are primarily our spaces, but the building itself has spaces on this side as well, and then further down in the back.
All right, well, I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan portion of this.
Okay. Do you have this sheet? Okay, so you want to include in your motion?
Okay, that are specific to this?
Yes, okay.
With the following conditions. So the standard conditions as applicable. Do we want to read through those, John? And that the design and style of the dumpster enclosure be addressed during design review and that there's a bike rack installed. So it looks like you've addressed that.
Second.
Second? Is there a second?
Yes, I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you want to take this?
Thank you for coming in. Next is case 2022-34 at 38, pardon me, at 307 Broadway. Concrete Gardner is the, Garden is the petition. There he is. This is for a. Site plan review.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Vladimir Samuel. I live at 24 Clark Ave, Chelsea, Massachusetts, and I will be representing Concrete Garden today. So I'm here for a site plan review. There have been no changes to our site plan since the last time we were here, last month. We did receive our special permit. We are economic empowerment as well as social equity. And I'll field any questions that you have for us.
Can you walk through the exterior lighting, the site lighting?
The exterior site lighting?
Yeah.
So this will be the front of the building. We will have cameras on either corner. The, the front comes out a little bit, so there's lighting on the bottom. We will make sure that it is well lit and there will always be lighting there. Also in the back, we will have that well lit as well, and there will be cameras on either side as well. There will be two cameras here as well as a camera at the corner. And, yeah, we'll keep it well lit. On this side, there's also, there's a, a building on, on either side of our building, so we don't have to have any cameras on the outside.
Okay, and as we mentioned in the last project, they need to be dark sky compliant so that the light is.
Of course.
Aimed downwards and it's not emitting light into the.
Of course.
Do you mind, just because I can't see, walking us through the flow, like, of customers?
Of course. So our entrance is here. There is a hallway that leads to the main entrance. This right here is the first entry. They will come through, they will see the security. They will take the license. We will put the ID, the form of ID, we will input into a computer, and they will be allowed to enter the store through here. They'll be buzzed in, and then they'll come to the cash rack where they will make their purchase, and then they will exit on the other side of the door through here.
Thank you.
No problem.
Is there parking?
No, we, we asked for parking relief in our special permit.
Okay, I guess one scenario that I can probably foresee with this business, I guess, I guess, how do you plan to treat people who are double parked in front of the store?
So we will, our securities will be out there. We will not permit double parking because it is already, there's a bus lane that already takes up so much of it. So we will not permit double parking to be running in and out. There are three public parking, public parking lots within 650 feet. So the furthest is 650 feet, the closest is 450. And so we will see if we could direct our customers into those if there is no available on-street parking.
On my part, I don't have any further questions. I just wanted to say congratulations for getting this far in the process.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
I'd like to make a motion to approve with the standard conditions and an exterior, that you provide an exterior lighting plan, not, not just the security cameras, but the light fixtures and that the specifications for those fixtures are light, dark sky compliant.
Okay, no problem.
I second.
I second this. Everybody understand the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
No.
One opposed. I'm sorry. Was anyone looking? Mimi is opposed.
Thank you so much, board. I appreciate it. Have a great evening.
All right, the next case is 2022-40 at 245 through 257 Marginal Street. The petitioner is Enterprise Rent-A-Car Company of Boston LLC. And I see they are represented.
Good evening. My name's Doug Valeri. I'm with Enterprise Rent-A-Car. I'm the property development manager at 405 West Street, and we're seeking a special permit for vehicle parking and storage over 245 to 257 Marginal Street.
Love to forgive me because I wasn't at the last meeting. I understand you were at the December meeting, right?
No, we, we did not. Something happened with the December meeting. We were not here.
Okay.
This is the first meeting before either the zoning board or the planning board. They have not.
Okay, because it says site plan hearing and vote.
For, for site plan, yes. The special permit. I'm sorry, should've said special permit as well.
Oh, okay, got it. And is there a slide presentation or? So we have the, I think we have this packet here. And can you explain exactly?
That's the only thing I have.
Okay, maybe you can walk us through the site plan.
What, this one?
Yeah, please go ahead. Just give us a, orient us.
It's literally vehicle parking and storage on this parking lot. We operate at 250, 324 Marginal Street right across the way, and this would be for the storage and parking of those vehicles that basically are for Logan Airport for rent.
Okay, this is uncovered storage?
No, it's just a regular open field parking.
Okay, so there's no, are there any instructions?
No, there is a small exit booth, a guide booth. There's a building that will not be occupied, a small building, and there is a shed that will not be used.
So I guess my question is, why are you coming to the board today? Did you just purchase this property or?
Eastern Minerals owns it, and according to, it's an airport overlay, so we need a special permit under airport overlay.
Okay, so what was this being used for previously?
We had it prior, a couple years ago before COVID hit, and the industry was super impacted by that whole deal, so we did not renew the terms of lease and now we're back to rent.
Okay, so you were doing the same thing previously. It expired, and now you're coming back just to restart what you were doing before. And I understand that you're not, I'm familiar with the site and I go along the harbor walk, you know, sometimes. So you're not changing anything about what's there right now?
I, there, I don't know if you guys want to.
Yeah, as part of a Chapter 91 permitting process with the DEP, the main change is something we had a number of conversations with, with Green Roots and the City of Chelsea about reconfiguring the public access to be in better compliance with DEP regulations and into be, let's say, thinking ahead to some of the plans of the city to develop a public access area immediately adjacent to the Chelsea Street Bridge. So as you mentioned, historically, there was a walkway along 245, 257, and the conversation has been to convert that into point access into larger, so instead of sort of a linear walk, larger public open areas on each end of the site. So actually, if you flip it around, well, actually, no, sorry, the color's all right. I was confused. So this, sorry, this is the west access point of the site, and in conversation with both Green Roots and the Mystic River Watershed Association, the goal is to essentially widen that walkway. You might know, since you walk on it, it's essentially between two chain-linked fences, which is pretty uninviting, with sort of an awkward parking configuration for the public to access. The idea is to widen that tree line, plant new trees, and install new furniture in the area and also repave the area. In the analysis of this area, there's also some sort of, like, bulkhead work that needs to be done to stabilize some of these areas. And so this keeps the public away from those areas of sort of bulkhead work that needs to be fixed. On the eastern edge of the site, the concept was to essentially reallocate the public walk area here, which again was often sort of deemed uninviting and sometimes even sort of unsafe feeling, into a larger public access area that could support a greater diversity of uses. Sort of, at this time, what's been committed to with the DEP is a series of plantings and sort of urban furniture, benches, picnic tables, and the, as well as dedicated public parking. Additionally, we're working with the city, we have forthcoming meetings, to really identify what are sort of the temporary improvements for recreation components that could be installed there. So the main, so I think from a parking use perspective, it's effectively the same parking use. The public access areas are getting significantly improved and reallocated. I, I think the other thing we should highlight is we are committing to pretty significant street front improvements in line with what Eastern Salt has done in front of, like, the Port Park area, which is essentially tree-lined, street-front. You might be familiar in the area. There's sort of a large concrete wall immediately adjacent to the sidewalk right now, which makes the sort of sidewalk pretty sort of uninviting, sort of in keeping with what has been done further west on Marginal Street. The concept is to continue that tree line in this portion of Marginal Street.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm familiar with it, and I do know what you mean when you, there is that public harbor walk area and you can walk along the shoreline, but it is, it does seem unsafe. You're just kind of like in this, I don't know, it's hard to explain, but it's, it's not very inviting. And there's also no real path. You're just kind of on the grass. I've seen people fishing there before, but not very many. And I think, I, I, so that site that's on the right side, right by the, by the Chelsea Street Bridge, a month or two ago, Green Roots had an event there, right? For like a visioning of what the public park would be?
Yeah, and so if you're familiar with Port Park.
Yeah.
That's essentially like, almost like a two-part park. There's like the year-round park, and then there's more of a flex area, support area. In many ways, this is being planned with the city to be that sort of support to the eventual public access at the Chelsea Street Bridge. So by consolidating the public access to the east end, it really sets the stage for it to be a sort of, let's say, grander park in the future, combining those two. I think everyone we've spoken to from the city, from Green Roots, Mystic River, Watershed Association, has sort of consistently been in agreement, and I should say this was the result of probably about a year's worth of discussion with Green Roots and Mystic River Watershed Association, to really identify that that public walkway was maybe not an attractive benefit to the community and that by consolidating public access, it'll have sort of greater use for the community. That's frankly also very much in line with the Department of Environmental Protection guidelines of Chapter 91 to consolidate access into points as opposed to sort of detached and hidden walkways along the waterfront.
I think as a, as a board member, I appreciate all that. In the future, for these sorts of situations, I don't know if it's possible to provide a letter of support from Green Roots or MWRA itself or even the city itself, but I think that would help, you know, inspire some confidence that, you know, these processes were, did, you did go through those conversations, you know? Because I, I'm glad to hear that you did, but it would kind of like show some, some proof of it, you know?
For peace of mind, I guess what I could say, because I totally hear you on that, and the Chapter 91 process with the DEP sort of mandates that community engagement process.
Gotcha.
And yes, we actually did get letters of support in that process. We probably could have brought them here.
Gotcha. That's great background, thank you.
I have another question besides the beautification. Are you guys bringing more power over there for chargers for cars?
No, we're not.
So.
It's surface parking only, that's it for us.
So you're not anticipating electrical cars in the next five to 10 years?
Nope. No, we're trying, if, if we, if we do, we would do it over the 324 Marginal Street location. That's where we have the main power supplier building. That's our main operation over there. So that would happen on the 324 Marginal Street side.
Okay. And what is your lighting proposal for this space?
I'm sorry, the lighting?
Lighting.
It's existing today, so whatever's on the lot is existing today.
And snow? How are you going to get rid of the snow?
Snow removal? We do all internal snow removal. We push it to one end, we just don't, our goal is not to have a ton of cars on this lot. We're in the rental business, so if, if we have cars on this lot for too long, then somebody's not doing what they're supposed to be doing. So our goal is to get them in, get them, get them parked, get them fleeted, and send them out or sell them when they come back in from being rented after the end of life.
Okay.
Excuse me. Dan, maybe you address this, but pardon my ancient hearing. What is the plan for the bulkhead?
Do you want to speak to that? The.
You know, that plaza, I'll call it. As you, I'm sure you're aware, a lot of the bulkhead has collapsed and it doesn't look that great.
So there was a failure of a portion of the bulkhead, what, 18 months ago? And that is currently under repair? Has that even been, it's been completed at this point? It was completed under an emergency repair.
So are you going to replace that, the bulkhead? I mean, I don't notice, don't notice it there, but perhaps it is.
The, the one portion in the center of the property is fully repaired under last summer. And then we've had an engineer and diver come out, and he's giving us recommendations to repair the, the corner that's adjacent to the next property on, I guess, the east or?
The west.
West, yeah. So the, the big, the square, and now will be returned to usable open space after it's repaired. And we also agreed in the plan to put a gate into the public access points on the property next to us that Enterprise owns. So I think it's going to be a better design in the end. But, but that repair has not been permitted yet, and that might take a little time to get the permit. So it's not, the other one was failed, so it went under emergency process. This one's not failed yet, but it's, it's at the end of life, so we need to get that permit going.
And the, the big question, is the lessor or the lessy required to maintain it?
The public access area and the street front will be maintained by the owners.
Will they be maintained better than they have been in the past few years?
Yes.
And I recall many, many years ago, when I think it was Enterprise first came before this board, and it was a couple of meetings, we granted permission, of course. And a part of the agreement, as I recall, was that the area would be maintained. And a part of the agreement, as I recall, was that the area would be maintained. Now, except for the padlocks, it looks like it's abandoned as of one o'clock this afternoon. It has not been maintained, and I'm not casting aspersions. All I'm saying is that this kind of verbal agreement is made with every project like this. However, I am encouraged, given the new, relatively new ownership of the property.
Yeah, this is sort of, let's say, enters the portfolio of other projects like Port Park and the Urban Agricultural Garden and the Community Garden on Hawthorne Street as other kind of landscapes that Eastern Salt maintains. And I think as you're pointing out, is, under new ownership, sort of enters that regime of maintenance now. So it is quite our.
We commit to that in our chapter ninety-one.
Yeah, I don't know if you heard that, but Joe was saying that it's committed in the chapter ninety-one permit with DEP, sort of now.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. I think the, it kind of negates my comment, really, but I just thought I'd get it out there. Other questions?
Well, I appreciate that. I think the properties you mentioned are well-maintained, and this one could, definitely still has trash around and stuff, but I look forward to it being rejuvenated in this way. So I'll make a motion to approve with the conditions, the standard conditions as applicable, that you provide a signage plan, a snow management plan, and a parking layout plan.
I'll second it.
Before we vote on that, there, this is a, officially a public hearing. Is there any member of the public present this evening who would like to address this Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the vote?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, hold on, folks, folks. My error. Yeah, you need a special permit recommendation, so we need to vote on that.
Okay.
And make a motion to approve the special permit?
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you again.
Unanimous. Now you can may, may.
Thank you.
We could have voted in your absence, but. All right, the next case is number twenty-two-two dash forty-one at Eight Addison Street. The petitioner is Saint Mary Orthodox Church. They need a special permit recommendation for a curb cut and a driveway.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Father Tudor, and I'm the parish priest at Saint Mary Romanian Orthodox Church. We're actually very close to you, I walked this evening from the church here. We're seeking the approval of a curb cut, and also the transformation of the left-hand side of the, of the church into a driveway. Now, the reason why we're asking for that is because we don't have a parking lot, and we're trying to kind of maximize the property that we have so that we can accommodate our, our parishioners on Sunday morning. So it would be the, the space here, right here. A problem would be the fact that, again, on Sunday morning, when we have our, our divine services, our neighbors are actually home, so there's no street parking available. If you have any questions, I'm more than willing to entertain them.
How many cars do you think you'll be able to fit into the space?
That's a good question. I would say probably not more than two. But as I said, every, every parking spot counts.
What was the department's recommendation or comments about this?
The department had no comments on it.
Can John, are you able to flip to the photo?
Right, that's, that's the one.
Sorry, I can't flip it.
Okay, that's right. I mean, it almost looks like there was a curb cut at one point.
I think that's the curb cut for the next.
Oh, I see, okay. So it just.
I didn't think it was a curb.
Okay, that's probably the neighbors.
So I'm, I'm not sure if we can turn it.
That's not it. I thought I had a photo. Sorry, I don't have a photo. Oh, I should actually, you might report.
And what paving material were you planning to use?
For the, for that area over there, right. So it would be exactly like this area here. So what we're planning to use is, you know, the little rocks, the pebbles, I'm not sure exactly what they're called, right.
So it's currently gravel or pebbles?
It is, it is, it is, we've been, right, right.
Yeah, that's good because it lets the water drain in, and so that's nice, good for the environment. On my part, I'm in support. I think that, you know, you look like you're a small church, and if you're willing to put up the money to deal with this project, then you must really need it, so.
We definitely need it, we definitely need it, yeah.
And I'd also like to say that it's one of the prettiest buildings in all of Chelsea.
It's actually pretty old, I think it's at least a hundred years old, yeah. It was built in the nineteen twenties, I think, by Russian, Ukrainian, and Belarusian immigrants.
I'll make a motion to approve this special permit with the standard conditions. Are there other conditions? Okay.
I'll second it.
Can I just ask, what is the process with the site plan approval? Is that, is that not, it's not required?
It's not required. Site plan approval is only required where a use is eight thousand square feet and twenty, over twenty-five parking spaces are required.
I would just like to add that we want to see use gravel or some sort of permeable material, so I'd like to.
Sure.
Put that into the conditions.
Yes, definitely.
We don't want to see it tarred over, because that'll create problems.
Yeah, I, I'll, I can add that to my motion.
Okay. And I'll second that, second motion.
So, okay, we'll combine them into one. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
We'll see you here February fourteenth for the CBA.
Got it, yeah, all right, thank you.
All right, next, the agenda is case two thousand eighteen dash fifty-nine S at One Forbes Street, and the petitioner is YIHE Forbes LLC.
Good evening. My name is Sean McCormick. I have an office at One Boston Place in Boston. I represent the applicant on this case. We're asking for a one-year extension of major site plan approval that issued in twenty nineteen. Absent the extension, the, the permit will lapse at the, well, I guess would have lapsed at the end of December. I, I, do you know a little background on this project? So, so we're looking at a, this is seven hundred thousand square foot, five hundred and ninety units, housing units, restaurant space, office space. It's a significant development on the waterfront. It has been sort of waylaid by COVID, by an act of the legislature, the permits were automatically extended. And, and so what I'm asking for is a finding that there's been good cause for an additional year. And, and what we're facing here is, is really a, you know, a sort of confluence of a, a couple different things. We've got the supply, ongoing supply chain issues, soaring labor and material costs, and really a instability in capital markets that would finance a, a, a large project like this. And so it, it's, it's really been stalled. We're hoping that in, in the next year, things will stabilize. Right now, getting investment is very difficult because there's just a lot of uncertainty, especially in, in housing, where you have interest rates going up, which means that there are fewer people in the market to buy new housing, which means that investors are, are looking, and they're sort of, they're sort of rethinking what kind of projects are financeable right now. That's the situation that, that we find ourselves in. So, so the zoning act allows for extensions of the lapsed provisions, but the, the cases, they don't really set out a standard, except for good cause. You see, if you look at the cases, you'll see after every sort of economic downturn, there are a handful of cases from the appeals courts that say, yeah, yeah, we, we get it when the economy crashes, that can be good cause to, to extend the life of a permit. So, so that's what, basically what we're asking for. I think it, a, a finding of good cause based on the economic events would be absolutely upheld and totally within the, the legal framework here. I will tell you that I was in front of the zoning board asking for the same thing last month. They did not approve the extension. I know John is working on a decision on that, but, but just so we're all on the same page, that, I just, you know, that did happen. So I'm, I'm hoping for a better result tonight, and I'd be happy to discuss.
I am, I'm not in agreement with this extension, and I do not think it has just
What occurs if the extension isn't approved?
As a, as a practical matter or as a legal matter? So, so.
Let's say practical.
As a practical matter, there's probably litigation. As a, as a, as a legal matter, it's, it's a little bit of a gray area. The, there's no, there's no mechanism for like a automatic, I don't know, revocation. Probably would happen is, if, if, if they went to pull a building permit, the building department would say, no, sorry, your permit's lapsed.
Okay.
Is there anyone who's here to give comments from the, the public?
That's up to which you.
Oh, can, can you ask?
That's a question. If you want, stop. That's up to you.
If you would like to open as the public, I'm happy to do it. Yes?
Please.
Okay, I'll interrupt for a moment, sir, and ask if there are any members of the public present who would like to speak regarding this matter. I see one already.
Hello, I'm Carl Allen. I'm the Economic Development Planner for the City of Chelsea, and on behalf of the Department of Housing and Community Development, we would urge you not to extend this site plan review. Much has changed since this was first approved. Our zoning has changed for this parcel. What was approved is no longer feasible under our current zoning. We changed the definition of what lot area is, and in this case, the lot area went from some little more than seventeen acres down to eleven and a half roughly of buildable land, so that the number of units that could be permitted on this site is now much lower. All of the amenities that were included in the site plan are now required by our zoning and are not at issue anymore. While it's true that at the moment, the capital markets may be in flux for the past three and a half years when they've had this permit, that hasn't been true. Anyone who's driven around Boston and seen all of the cranes knows that all through the pandemic, construction kept going and didn't really slow down at all. We understand that the current owner sees value in the permits and wants to sell the property to someone who can exploit that value. We would like them to come back to the city after they purchase it and propose a new project. We don't think this is the correct project for that site at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have something to say or questions to ask? Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to deny the one-year extension.
And do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
What did you say? That was the last case.
What's the last case?
A motion to adjourn. Oh, oh, I would like to make a motion. This is something that we discussed in passing at a previous meeting, but I'd like to make a motion, it's a little unorthodox, to hold, to call a meeting of the planning board and invite Alex Train and John De Priest for the purpose of discussing the purpose of planning board, the, basically training us on how to.
That's me.
Yeah, I, I think that we should hold another meeting where we can all come together and talk about the procedures in a, in a circumstance where, you know, we can just have a conversation about it. And it would be a public meeting, of course, but we could hold it on another day, so we're not all, you know, in these, in the chambers, and it's a little more awkward like this.
Well, you only have one case next month, so you could just add it to your agenda for next month.
Would we be allowed to move to the conference room for it?
I'd have to post it as such.
Yeah, can you post it as?
And it depends on if that conference room was available or not.
Okay.
I can look into it. But that's up, that's up to all of you.
So, so is that acceptable to you as the motion maker? That condition, that the meeting be a regularly scheduled meeting, but would this, that your issue be on the agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And with the, the, it posted that we're going to move to the conference room, so people can attend if they wish.
Okay, I'm not sure we need a motion.
I don't think you do.
I mean, we're just going to add it to the agenda.
To the agenda, okay, great.
The only reason we might need some kind of a motion is if we had a, an advertised situation where the regular meeting was adjourned, and the planning board moved to another room, and then, you know, I don't think we need that.
May we invite Alex Train to come to talk about how it can fit, the planning board's work fits into broader city goals?
We may invite anyone who we wish.
Cool.
With certain obvious restrictions. Okay, so we do not have a motion. Oh, we do have a motion. Oh, we do have a motion. John?
The council has, has asked that all your board meetings be televised and this is the only room that can televise them, so it would have to be, the meeting would have to be in this room.
Oh, okay. All board meetings are televised?
Planning board, zoning board, licensing commission, traffic commission and council and school committee.
So a motion to adjourn has been made and seconded.
Who's, I'm sorry, who seconded?
I motion.
Jessica.
And Eric seconded?
And Eric seconded, yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting is adjourned.